The meeting please come to order. This is the earliest we've come to order on a Friday in a long time. What's wrong with the sound system? It's howling. Okay, I think we're all right now. Good morning. This is a meeting of the Los Angeles City Council on Friday, February 18th. I'm Councilmember Ruth Galanter, President Pro Tem of the Council, and we actually have a quorum.
Birds and chick, Furya Galanter, Goldberg Hernandez, Holden, Miss Kowski, Pacheco Padilla, Really Thomas, Orange Wax, Walters, Faro, ten members present in a quorum, Madam President.
And because we have ten members present, I'm going to skip the whole speech about we're available on council phone and on channel 35. You can find that out for yourself. Let's do the approval of the minutes first. Without objection, unanimous vote.
Commendatory resolutions for approval.
Also, without objection, unanimous vote. And now, we're going to go into Friday morning, and the Chair will first recog-- where is Mr. Pacheco? There he is. You're first. We'll recognize Mr. Pacheco for a presentation.
Good morning, Madam President and colleagues. I stand before you to recognize an individual who has been a great leader here in the court system. As a former Deputy District Attorney, I appreciate when the courts are running efficiently and they're doing their jobs, and the staff, and everyone is moving the process along. So today, I want to bring up Fritz Orlick. He is moving on to greener pastures. He's moving on to the California Supreme Court. We want to recognize you for your service, your dedication, and all of the commitment you had to the courts here in Los Angeles, serving as Court Administrator since nineteen-- as its Assistant Court Administrator since 1983. And also, served as Assistant Executive Officer last since three court for a period of almost two years. And now, moving on to the Supreme Court, I also want to recognize that he brought his sons, and his wife, and his wife's sister here, who are in the audience. But for me, it's always a pleasure to recognize someone who moves the city and the court system in the right direction. And we have here for Frederick Carl Orlick, or Fritz, a resolution thanking you for all your contributions. So on behalf of the City of Los Angeles, I present you with this resolution for all your great work.
Thank you very, very much.
Say a few words about your next--
It is, has indeed been a privilege and an honor to serve the citizens of the City of Los Angeles and the County of Los Angeles since 1983 in my capacity as the Assistant Court Administrator of the Los Angeles Municipal Court, and, and as the Court Administrator since 1995. I know the Council is, has been supportive of, of court activities. We've worked closely with police departments on many, many occasions, and the teamwork in this, in this city and county is, is always something that, that I think should make all of elected officials very proud of their, of their services that are offered here. I'm, I'm, in a way, sorry, but also very happy now that the Municipal Court has unified with the Superior Court, and we have a unified Superior Court in Los Angeles County, only Kern County not being unified in the state. And it's, it's with a little sadness that I, I moved to San Francisco where I began work as the Clerk of the California Supreme Court. Again, thank you very much for this honor.
Thank you, gentlemen. The Chair recognizes Council President Pro Tem Galanter for a presentation.
Thank you, Mr. President. I, I actually have three presentations, and I'm going to start with Steve King, if I can find him. There you are. Well, where's the rest of the group? Today, I, it's my privilege, and also it's fun, to recognize Steve King, who was recently elected President of the All-City Employee Benefit Service Associates, or ASIBSA, as we usually call it. I've known Steve for a long time now. He's been an employee of the city for, how long?
Twenty.
Twenty years, longer than I have. And I met him because his wife Audrey has been with my staff since the day I got here. And he's, he's not only, this is, this is a city family. The King family is really a city family. Where are you, Audrey? Well, we got all the daughters, well, we got both daughters here. There we are. We have, we have Steve's mother, we have all kinds of people here from the family. This is, this is, we also have the board members, the rest of the board members from the organization, and the office staff of the organization. And the reason that we have everybody here is to celebrate the fact that we are, in fact, one big family, and that the, particularly when you have three members of the same family working for the City of Los Angeles for a number of years at a time, in different departments, doing different jobs, and maintaining the kind of commitment that they do, not only to their own families, but also to the city family. And they've also spent, both Audrey and Steve have spent a lot of time working to help raise money for the United Negro College Fund, which had the opportunity to host one of their daughters. So I am very proud to be associated with the King family and with the All-City Employees' Benefits-- I can't do that right-- Benefit Service Associates. And Steve, I want to present you with my heartfelt congratulations, a certificate, and your new role as El Presidente.
Thank you very much.
Let the city hip to. There you go.
Thank you very much. First, I'd like to thank Ruth and the rest of the council persons. I'd also like to introduce my office staff. I have Mary Allen here, who is our Office Manager, and Sadiya Faulkner, who is her assistant. I have my mother on the outside. My father would be here, but he's at, he's in Georgia with his 93-year-old sister having her birthday, so he felt he would have to go there and support her. I have my daughters, and I have our Treasurer, and our Secretary. I just want to say thank you, because we have begun a new-- That's my daughter. It is, it is my pleasure to begin this millennium as the President of the ASIBSA. We have come a long way in the 20 years that we've been in existence, and hopefully during my term, we'll go quite a bit further. We want to expand the services of our, of our members. We want to expand the benefits of our members. And I also understand that some of our City Council persons are not members of the Association. We will certainly be calling your office soon, and we will expect to have a lot of help from you guys as we do things through the year. I'd like to thank you, Ms. Galanter.
Thank you. Take this. Don't go far. I really do feel like this is Family Day. My next presentation is to the members of GLU, the Gay and Lesbian United Employees, and one of the board members is another of my staff members. I think it's important for all us straight people to recognize that the fight for gay and lesbian rights is the same civil rights fight as all the other civil rights fights, and one that all of us should be supporting as wholeheartedly and open-handedly as we can. As you know, there are a lot of attacks on people who are gay and lesbian, for, some of them are physical attacks, which is absolutely appalling. Some of them are verbal attacks, there are civil rights attacks. And I think it's important that the City of Los Angeles has taken the lead in opening up acknowledgement of the struggles of gay and lesbian people for the same kinds of dignity that everybody else is supposed to have. We all have these struggles. So we do have a very active employees' organization, and it is my honor and pleasure to present certificates, if I got them in the right order here, to, first of all, to the current Board of Directors. This is a newly, I believe, a newly elected-- Aren't you glad the elections are over? I hate going through elections. So let me start, let me start with the current Board of Directors. And first, we have Madeline Renee, who is the Female Co-Chair. Take that, because I got lots more to hand out here. David Manzo is the Male Co-Chair. I always turn the wrong way on these, I apologize, everybody. Timothy Tucker is the Secretary. See, there we are. We're going to do all this with some ceremony here. Richard Lieboff is the Treasurer. There you are. I got it right this time, by accident. Don Godino is the Director-at-Large. Yeah, you got to be here somewhere. All right, who am I missing? Okay, here we go. Stuart Irwin, also a Director-at-Large. And CD6's very own Mike Bonin, also a Director-at-Large. Now, are you going to talk before I acknowledge-- All right. We, we have also two retiring board members, only one of whom is here today, and so we also want to recognize the service of retiring board member Ron Samuels. And with that, without repeating my speech, I understand Mike has been designated the spokesperson. It's a disease that happens in CD6, so here you are.
Thanks. I want to thank the, the members of the Council, and as always and most especially, Councilmember Galanter for the recognition and for the opportunity to say a few words this morning about who we are and why we're here. We had a board meeting last week, and it occurred to a lot of us during the course of our discussion that most of us, before we joined GLU, didn't know that GLU existed. And once we did, we didn't really know how to get a hold of GLU. So the first thing we want to say this morning is that we're here. And the second thing we want to say is if you need to get a hold of us, we have a hotline, and it's 323-860-6622. The fact that we're here, though, raises the question of why we're here. After all, the city's, the city has a domestic partnership ordinance, and GLU is represented on the Affirmative Action Committee here in the city, and has representation in a, in a lot of forums and a lot of issues. But the fact remains that there are still dark corners in this city, in, in various departments throughout the city, where people do not feel safe being open, being gay, lesbian, or bisexual. And that's wrong. The city is a leader nationwide in promoting tolerance and, and open-mindedness, but there are still places where people are hidden in the closet and need to feel that they can come out safely and that their, their professional and their personal life will not be threatened as, as a result. It is important for us here, I think most of us on the board, have the privilege of, of working in places where we are open, and there's a lot of members of the gay and lesbian community here in the city who aren't members of the organization, and we'd like to appeal to--
So on behalf of the City of Los Angeles, I present you with this resolution for all your great work.
Thank you very, very much.
Say a few words about your next.
It is, has indeed been a privilege and an honor to serve the citizens of the City of Los Angeles and the County of Los Angeles since 1983 in my capacity as the Assistant Court Administrator of the Los Angeles Municipal Court and, and as the Court Administrator since 1995. I know the council is, has been supportive of, of court activities. We've worked closely with police departments on many, many occasions and the, the teamwork in this, in this city and county is, is always something that, that I think should make all of elected officials very proud of their, of their services that are offered here. I'm, I'm in a way sorry, but also very happy now that the municipal court has unified with the Superior Court and we have a unified Superior Court in Los Angeles County, only Kern County not being unified in the state. And it's, it's with a little sadness that I, I moved to San Francisco where I begin work as the Clerk of the California Supreme Court. Again, thank you very much for this honor.
Thank you, gentlemen. The Chair recognizes Council President Pro Tim Galanter for a presentation.
Thank you, Mr. President. I, I actually have three presentations and I'm going to start with Steve King if I can find him. There you are. Well, where's the rest of the group? Today, I, it's my privilege and also it's fun to recognize Steve King, who was recently elected President of the All-City Employee Benefit Service Associates, or ASIBSA, as we usually call it. I've known Steve for a long time now. He's been an employee of the city for, how long?
Twenty.
Twenty years, longer than I have. And I met him because his wife Audrey has been with my staff since the day I got here and he's, he's not only, this is, this is a city family. The King family is really a city family. Where are you, Audrey? Well, we got all the daughters, well, we got both daughters here. There we are. We have, we have Steve's mother. We have all kinds of people here from the family. This is, this is, we also have the board members, the rest of the board members from the organization and the office staff of the organization. And the reason that we have everybody here is to celebrate the fact that we are in fact one big family and that the, particularly when you have three members of the same family working for the City of Los Angeles for a number of years at a time in different departments, doing different jobs and maintaining the kind of commitment that they do not only to their own families, but also to the city family. And they've also spent, both Audrey and Steve have spent a lot of time working to help raise money for the United Negro College Fund, which had the opportunity to host one of their daughters. So I am very proud to be associated with the King family and with the All-City Employees' Benefits, I can't do that right, Benefit Service Associates. And Steve, I want to present you with my heartfelt congratulations, a certificate on your new role as El Presidente.
Thank you very much.
Let the city hip to. There you go.
Thank you very much. First, I'd like to thank Ruth and the rest of the council persons. I'd also like to introduce my office staff. I have Mary Allen here, who is our Office Manager, and Sadiya Faulkner, who is her assistant. I have my mother on the outside. My father will be here, but he's at, he's in Georgia with his 93-year-old sister having her birthday, so he felt he would have to go there and support her. I have my daughters and I have our Treasurer and our Secretary. I just want to say thank you because we have begun a new, that's my daughter. It is my pleasure to begin this millennium as the President of the ASIBSA. We have come a long way in the 20 years that we've been in existence and hopefully during my term, we'll go quite a bit further. We want to expand the services of our, of our members. We want to expand the benefits of our members. And I also understand that some of our city council persons are not members of the association. We will certainly be calling your office soon and we will expect to have a lot of help from you guys as we do things through the year. I'd like to thank you, Ms. Galanter.
Thank you. Take this. Don't go far. I really do feel like this is Family Day. My next presentation is to the Members of GLU, the Gay and Lesbian United Employees, and one of the board members is another of my staff members. I think it's important for all us straight people to recognize that the fight for gay and lesbian rights is the same civil rights fight as all the other civil rights fights and one that all of us should be supporting as wholeheartedly and open-handedly as we can. As you know, there are a lot of attacks on people who are gay and lesbian for, some of them are physical attacks, which is absolutely appalling. Some of them are verbal attacks. There are civil rights attacks. And I think it's important that the City of Los Angeles has taken the lead in opening up acknowledgement of the struggles of gay and lesbian people for the same kinds of dignity that everybody else is supposed to have. We all have these struggles. So we do have a very active employees' organization and it is my honor and pleasure to present certificates, if I got them in the right order here, to, first of all, to the current Board of Directors. This is a newly, I believe, a newly elected, aren't you glad the elections are over? I hate going through elections. So let me start, let me start with the current Board of Directors. And first, we have Madeline Renee, who is the Female Co-Chair. Take that, because I got lots more to hand out here. David Manzo is the Male Co-Chair. I always turn the wrong way on these, I apologize, everybody. Timothy Tucker is the Secretary. See, there we are. We're going to do all this with some ceremony here. Richard Leiboff is the Treasurer. There you are. I got it right this time, by accident. Don Godino is a Director-at-Large. Yeah, you've got to be here somewhere. All right, who am I missing? Okay, here we go. Stuart Irwin, also a Director-at-Large. And CD6's very own Mike Bonin, also a Director-at-Large. Now, are you going to talk before I acknowledge? All right. We, we have also two retiring Board members, only one of whom is here today. And so we also want to recognize the service of retiring Board Member Ron Samuels. And with that, without repeating my speech, I understand Mike has been designated the spokesperson. It's a disease that happens in CD6, so here you are.
Thanks. I want to thank the, the members of the council and as always and most especially, Council Member Galanter for the recognition and for the opportunity to say a few words this morning about who we are and why we're here. We had a board meeting last week and it occurred to a lot of us during the course of our discussion that most of us, before we joined GLU, didn't know that GLU existed. And once we did, we didn't really know how to get ahold of GLU. So the first thing we want to say this morning is that we're here. And the second thing we want to say is if you need to get ahold of us, we have a hotline and it's 323-860-6622. The fact that we're here, though, raises the question of why we're here. After all, the city's, the city has a domestic partnership ordinance and GLU is represented on the Affirmative Action Committee here in the city and has representation in a, in a lot of forums and a lot of issues. But the fact remains that there are still dark corners in this city, in, in various departments throughout the city, where people do not feel safe being open, being gay, lesbian, or bisexual. And that's wrong. The city is a leader nationwide in promoting tolerance and, and open-mindedness, but there are still places where people are hidden in the closet and need to feel that they can come out safely and that their, their professional and their personal life will not be threatened as, as a result. It is important for us here, I think most of us on the board, have the privilege of, of working in places where we are open. And there's a lot of members of the gay and lesbian community here in the city who aren't members of the organization and we'd like to appeal to them to join because we owe it to those who are not, do not have the privilege to work in a working environment like we do, to, to help them out and to be there for them when they need and they need to fight their struggles. Finally, I just want to say a few words. We'd be remiss if we didn't, if we stepped away from the podium without saying a few words about Proposition 22. As most people know, on the March 7th ballot, there is yet another in, in what seems to be a, a political pathology in this state that every two years produces a hate-filled statewide referendum. First, 187, then 209, now 22. And despite what you may hear from the proponents and despite the language of the ordinance, this referendum has a stink and a spirit to it that has a very simple and crass message. And that message says that there's fags on television, there's fags in political office, and there's fags forming clubs in our school and they must be stopped. And this, this referendum is meant to, to slap down a civil rights struggle. And so we appeal to everybody to make a statement on March 7th, that this referendum is not a statement of who we are and what we're about and we're better than that. Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. Well, I've got to do one more and then we'll give the banner in the back. Okay, now lightening up a little bit here. This happens to be, are you ready for this? This happens to be California Raisin Day in the City of Los Angeles. Do I really need to say anything else? I, I want you to know I have my, my morning shot of raisins up on the desk there waiting for me and you need to bring that, yes, bring that out a little bit here. All right, this is, this is, believe it or not, a new raisin character, although raisins, of course, are old and shriveled. Sorry about that. Hey, listen, I'm old and shriveled too, what can I tell you? And shriveling fast. It's my pleasure to introduce the new California raisin character and to present the California Raisin Marketing Board, whose mission is to support and promote the increased use of California-grown raisins. And we have here for them a resolution declaring today California Raisin Day in the City of Los Angeles and every one of you has signed it. With the new raisin, we have several people who've been working to increase the awareness about the health benefits of raisins. I have Harry Rixman, Interim Director of the California Raisin Marketing Board, and Dr. Julie Jones, President of the American Association of Cereal Chemists. That's C-E-R-E-A-L, not the other kind. And Bernice Newman of Morgan &amp; Myers. There are 5,000 raisin growers who reside in California and who contribute significantly to our agricultural and economical viability. They also produce raisins, which taste good. They would like you to know that raisins are a naturally sweet, nutritious, fat-free food and are part of a balanced, healthy diet. Do I get paid for this? On behalf of the Los Angeles City Council, therefore, it is my pleasure, my pleasure to present, can you hold this with those things? I don't know. I think we'll present it to the Marketing Board. A resolution signed by all of us declaring this California Raisin Day and wishing everybody a happy day with the shriveled-up grapes.
It doesn't talk.
It doesn't talk. All right, you talk.
Thank you very much, Councilwoman Galanter. First, let me add that the raisins may look old and wrinkled, but they're only two years old.
Right, but they are wrinkled.
I won't argue with that, so am I. But on behalf of the Raisin Marketing Board, I'd like to thank all the members of the Los Angeles City Council for officially recognizing California raisins. And as you commented, I'd like to introduce just for a moment Dr. Julie Jones, who is a leading nutritionist that would just make some comments about California raisins.
Councilwoman Galanter, we'd like to thank you for your longtime interest in health and for LA's and California Raisin Day because we, we in the Midwest look to the coast for trends. So I'm a Minnesotan and I come here because it's warm and we look for health trends and you, you in California and all Americans need to start a trend because we really need to eat five servings of fruits and vegetables every day and I'd really like to see you eat eight or nine. And we know that 20% of Americans on any single day don't eat a whole serving of fruit and vegetables. And so a really, really easy way to do that is to put one of these at your desk or in your pocket or in the lunch pail to get a serving of fruit, which gives you antioxidants, which can help actually prevent wrinkling, affects, the effects of aging. It can actually, the antioxidants can help protect against coronary disease and cancer. They can boost your immune system, so please, please, please eat five, preferably eight or nine servings of fruits and vegetables. Make raisins, a source of fiber and potassium and other good things, one of those great sources. So thanks for being interested in health and other nutrition issues. And I'd like to turn it back to Harry.
With that, if I may, I would now like to introduce the California New Raisin Character. I can do either one.
All right, so now do you dance or what do we do here?
I think they had some music in there.
I think we have musi, I think we have a musical accompaniment here. And not only that, the raisins are pretty good too. Thank you very much. Thank you, Mr. President. That's it.
Thank you, Ms. Galanter. The Chair would now like, like to recognize Councilman Padilla for a presentation.
Thank you, Mr. President. Colleagues, before I begin, I'd like to call a few people up here to join me. Andrew Adelman, Representative from the Building Industry Association, and some former colleagues from the Building and Safety Commission. Colleagues and everybody who's watching on television, it is indeed a pleasure to make this presentation. We're honoring Andrew Adelman today, who joined the city as the General Manager of the Department of Building and Safety when I served on the commission, so this one is a little personal for me. But I also asked members of the Building Industry Association of Southern California, both Jay Stark and Ray Pearl, to join us for this presentation. To keep it short and sweet, Andrew Adelman has made the city proud by earning with distinct, with distinction, the Honor of Local Official of the Year from the Western Region of the National Association of Home Builders. At this point, I'd like to turn it over to, is it Jay or, Jay's going to speak, give, give us some more information on the particular award. And I'd also ask either Joyce or Mabel, whichever one of you would like to speak on the commission's behalf, before turning it over to Andrew. But city has ongoing challenges about doing a better job and making it known that we try to do a good job. And Andrew certainly has given us much cause and reason to celebrate and highlight some of the good things that the city is doing. So with that, I'll turn it over to Jay Stark.
Good morning. My name is Jay Stark and I'm here today as Co-Chair for the Los Angeles Government Affairs Committee for the Building Industry Association and more importantly, as a customer for the Department of Building and Safety. And I use the word "customer" not lightly. A few years ago, if you were going into Building and Safety, I'm not sure if many people thought they were being treated as a customer. But I can tell you, under the leadership and enlightenment of Andrew Adelman, he has taken the department to a new level, really serving as a national model and creating a department for which we can all be proud. There are hundreds of thousands of people that, that go through every, Building and Safety every year. And I can tell you, he is one of the reasons that we're doing business in the City of Los Angeles and I know I speak for others when I say that. So I will turn it over to Ray, Ray Pearl and to tell you a little bit more about the award. Thank you.
Thank you, Jay. My name is Ray Pearl. I'm with the Los Angeles Building Industry Association. And to tell you a little bit about the award, Andrew, with Andrew's leadership, he was responsible for doing a countywide program that eliminated, went from a thousand local building code amendments down to 44. What that has done is created uniformity throughout Los Angeles County where none used to exist. And by doing so, he's saved time, he's saved money, he's created an efficient government without compromising safety at all. This award was given by the National Association of Home Builders in Dallas in January. It is recognizing Andrew as Local Government Official of the Year for the West Region. And it's not just local building official, it's local government official. So Andrew, I'd like to present this to you on behalf of the National Association of Home Builders.
Thank you very much. Thank you very much. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you very much.
Good morning, Honorable Councilmembers. Mabel Chang, President of the Building and Safety Commission, and here with Joyce Foster, Vice President. We're here on behalf of the commission for us to thank our former colleague, Alex Padilla, for his support and also to extend our congratulations to our General Manager, Andrew Adelman, whom we're also proud of.
And I know there's several council members who may want to also add a few comments, but we've heard from the industry and their pleasure of working with Andrew and what that means. But from the policymaking perspective, we understand that economic development and development in general is important for the health of our city and creating economic opportunities and creating jobs. We know housing is important for the health and stability of our city, particularly as we're projected to grow by millions in population over the next decade or so. And so the Department of Building and Safety and leadership within that department is certainly important for the future of our city if we're going to grow in a smart way, in a responsible way. And I'm glad to know that Andrew Adelman's there in charge and doing such a great job. On behalf of the City Council, it's my pleasure and honor to also recognize your award and your achievements with this certificate of congratulations.
Thank you very much. Thank you. Thank you very much. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you very much.
Yes, before we have Mr. Adelman say a few words, there are a few council members that would like to speak. The Chair recognizes Councilman Pacheco.
Colleagues, I wanted to stand and recognize Andrew Adelman and the Department for playing a significant part in my work with the project which we so fondly call El Mercado. Andrew came in to this position recently and him and his staff, specifically David Lada, have been working with me and comprehensively dealing with the codes, the compliance of the codes, El Mercado. And I think that's one of the steps that we promised the community that we would make sure that everything was done properly before El Mercado got CFO. And Andrew and David have been working with my staff pretty regularly, at least once a week, updating us on how things are going. So I want to commend the department and the leadership that Andrew has shown.
Thank you, Councilman. Also from the Chair, I would like to commend Andrew for his very hard work, the can-do spirit that he has brought to the department, has really turned the department around. And Andrew, congratulations, speaking from the Chair. You truly deserve it. Andrew, go right ahead.
Thank you. I would like to thank Councilmember Padilla, Mayor, Council, Council staff, and the Board of Building and Safety Commissioner for the support they have given me and the department and the guidance they have given me. I would like to introduce my family here, my wife Jennifer, my daughter Shannon, my daughter Ashlyn, and my friend of 25 years, Mr. Robert Mavetat. But most of all, I want to thank and share with this award with my other family, the employees of the Department of Building and Safety. They are the ones who truly work day-to-day, issuing those 200,000, 150,000 permits per year, dealing with, working with 600,000 inspections per year. And they are the ones who have really and truly earned this award. And I just, as a captain of that team, thank you for the award. And on behalf of the Department of Building and Safety, I am honored to accept this distinguished award from the Building Industry Association and again, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Councilman, and congratulations again, Andrew. The Chair would like to recognize Councilwoman Chick for a presentation.
I'm going to invite what we call the Chick Team to come and gather around me. Closer, closer, closer. No, I'm sorry. Do we have cleanups? I'm going to wait until it gets quiet. Colleagues, I think probably many of you, similarly to me, know and have experienced that one of the greatest joys in life is to watch someone grow and, and change and, and develop and expand their talents and abilities. And it's even more special when you partner with that person. And then the very, very best is when it's a two-way thing, when it's a mutual helping each other to grow and change. Karen Constein has been at my side as my Chief of Staff for over six and a half years, starting day one, when I raised my hand and took the oath of office to be a Los Angeles City Council member. We have learned to spread our wings together. This woman is tough and persistent and focused and tenacious and when she knows or believes she's right, she can be unyielding. But she's also playful and funny and caring and very concerned about the constituents of the Third Council District and her colleagues, both in the District Office and the City Hall Office. She strove every day of those over six and a half years to mentor and assist those staff people, many of whom are gathered round people, many of whom are gathered round us, some of whom are, I guess, honorary members of the Chick Team now. But she's assisted them to strive to do their best and to meet new challenges and even to seek out new challenges. She's known by her friends and her family and her coworkers and many here in City Hall as the person to go to, and often you don't have to because she finds you, to be a guide and an advisor about not only the local art world but beyond, the world of great diversity and artistic talent here, art and theater and film. This new position is perfect for her, and she is perfect for it. And Governor Gray Davis, as he is already known to do, has made a brilliant choice in naming Karen Constein as the Director of the Office of the California Film Commission. I hope I got that right. The California film industry, and therefore all of us, are going to greatly benefit from this very special person and her talents, who I and my staff and her other friends here at City Hall, here I go, will dearly miss. Congratulations, Karen.
Thank you. I don't have prepared remarks, but I do want to say that the reason I'm successful is because the person standing by my side and all the people that are here, I dearly love them.
And your parents?
And my parents are also here. But I've had the privilege, not once but twice, to work with the best people in City Hall, and I was fortunate to work for Joe Milkyfloris many years ago, and I never thought we could assemble a team better, and I think we have, and I'm so proud of everybody here, and I thank you so much for all your hard work. Ron Deaton says I'll be back again, and Ron's usually right, so this isn't the last time
Councilmember Padilla to join me.
that I'll probably be working in City Hall, and I also want to say that while sometimes
I'm not sure if Councilmember Padilla's in the room right now.
LA doesn't get the best press, in my heart it always does, this is the best city, we
You know, in the presentation I'm going to make today, I think each and every one of
work in the best state, and I look forward to working with you in my new job, in my new
you, as public policymakers who represent your constituents, want to recognize the importance
capacity, and I just want to say thank you.
Thank you, Mr. President.
of this. When I first chose to be a public official and ran for office back in 1986, we used
Oh. Madam President. That's okay.
to talk about a Spanish-speaking community that was very limited in the information
We do this little routine up here, so we were busy with something else. Good luck, Karen.
they were getting, and the reason they were limited was there wasn't a lot of Spanish-language
Thanks a lot.
The chair recognizes Mr. Hernandez for a presentation.
media, and a lot of it basically was a reflection of what English-language media would put in the news wires.
See, we have traffic jams everywhere in Los Angeles.
And what started happening is one of the leaders in the movement to increase the capacity of Spanish-language media was KMEX, and we also know that competition evolved with Channel 52 and some other local Spanish-language stations, and they continued to grow in their movement and their ability to talk to the Spanish-speaking community in our region. A couple of years ago, Councilmember Altoria and I stood here and announced how it was that KMEX became the number-one watched news station in the evening from 6:00 to 7:00 o'clock. And what you need to know is last year, Channel 34, KMEX, basically is the leading Spanish-language television station in the country, and they decided to launch their first local one-hour Spanish-language morning newscast. And the reason this whole news team is behind me is we'd like to share with you that they've already become the second-highest rated early-morning local newscast in Los Angeles, only behind Channel 11, KTTV. Noticias 34, primera edición, first edition, is also the highest-rated newscast among all key male demographics, according to Nielsen's research 1999 November ratings in their survey for the Los Angeles market. Noticias 34 primera edición, KMEX TV, announced that it is expanding its popular morning news from the hours of 5:00 a.m. to 7:00 a.m. Currently, they're from 6:00 to 7:00. They brought their entire news crew here, and you have everybody from producers and writers and reporters, I think the guy who gives the, highway patrol officer who gives the, I guess, the traffic reports, especially when it's raining. The reality is, I wanted to share with you their accomplishments, because many of us as public policymakers, as we're dealing with the complex issues facing our city, have to understand the importance of their role in disseminating that information, and we need to understand the importance of their role in letting us know the perspective of some of the communities we represent. Now, Councilmember Chick, you should know, has taken an active role in trying to learn Spanish, so that she could communicate better throughout the city. One of the tidbits that one of the news anchors shared with me is that they're finding that English-speaking audience is growing in terms of their viewership, and as we celebrate this new millennium and what our region is about, we as public policymakers cannot control the demographics. We cannot create borders and tell people they can live here and can't live here. We as public policymakers cannot tell people what language they speak and disseminate information to them based on what we believe they should hear, and it's the news media that plays a good part of this role. And again, I just wanted to congratulate KMEX on their important role and the fact that they continue to expand their ability to disseminate information, they continue to grow in their team, and the information that they're expanding to the communities, and I needed you to know that their role has been extremely important in our community. And before I make the presentation of congratulations, I'd like to allow Councilmember Pacheco to say a few words.
I just wanted to commend Channel 34 for obviously expanding the service from one hour to two hours, because that is a recognition that the need is out there. Our community, whether it be the Spanish-speaking community or the English-speaking Latinos, definitely want to get more involved in local politics and civic participation in some of our events, and so I commend Channel 34 for working so hard to make the information available to them and giving them avenues to participate, not only with my office but with all the offices here in the city of Los Angeles, especially with my colleagues who may not be, have Spanish as their first language like I have, but, so thank you.
Thank you. You know, growing up Latino in the city of Los Angeles, or growing up in a family of immigrants in Pacoima, California, there was three things that I counted on when I was a kid. One was learning English in school, being a product of bilingual education. There was all the birthdays and the baptisms and the weddings in the park, city parks, and the third was watching Che Espirito, Siempre en Domingo, Noticias 34, Lucha Libre, and all the great programming on Channel 34. And as Councilmember Hernandez mentioned, times have changed a little bit. Demographics have changed, economics have changed, politics has changed, and with those changing times, KMEX, Channel 34, and Univision as a network has also changed to meet the changing needs, not only of the Latino community, but of the city of Los Angeles and wherever the network has a presence. So it's no surprise to me that the news show is as highly ranked as it is, both the morning and the evening program, and all the programming that they offer, and the content of the programming is something to be proud of, regardless of the language that it's in. So it's an honor and a pleasure for me to also stand here with my two colleagues and congratulate the station for their success and to present this award. Thank you.
And I'll be calling up the winning news anchor, Nancy Augusto, to please come up. Many of you might have remembered her when she was running around with that mic as that reporter. But Noticias 34, primera edición, in recognition of your first anniversary celebration, your popularity among local Hispanic viewers has posted an impressive plus 89% rating increase from 1998, a .9 to a .17 rating. Already, this is second-highest rated early-morning local newscast in Los Angeles, and again, congratulations.
Thank you so much, Councilman Hernandez, Pacheco, Padilla. This is such a great honor. I remember, as you were saying, the days when Spanish-speaking reporters would stand in the back of the room and wait until everybody else asked their questions, and it was our turn, and we had to ask the questions in English, because many times, we wouldn't have anybody who would speak Spanish, with your exception, you would be there to help us. And now demographics have changed, and we are a proof that this phenomenon is happening. Before anything, I would like to introduce a wonderful group of people that work with me in Every Morning, and this is a talent, a works, primera edición. I would like to start with Dr. Luis Pacheco, who's in charge of our medical segment, Every Morning. Thank you so much, he's an incredible part of this show. Our star reporter, covering all the news, hard news in the morning, Ismael Hernandez Motezuma, who's been in the station for over a decade, and he knows what I'm talking about when I say that we had to wait in the back of the room for everybody else to ask the questions, then wait for our turn. My co-anchor, Antonio Valverde, we've worked together for so many years on the field, and now we have this incredible opportunity to be here in primera edición. Our beloved Cristina Aceves, she's our incredible feature reporter. Our own California Highway Patrol Officer, the best traffic report in town, I guarantee, Guillermo Preciado. He's incredible. He just won the Golden Mic Award for his reports in the morning, so congratulations to him, too. Our best weatherman in town, I guarantee, he's always accurate, Guillermo Quiros. And of course, with us also, all the technical group, all the technical crew, please stand up. All of our friends who work behind the camera and who work so, so hard with us, you don't see their faces, but they make this show possible. And also, I would like to recognize the administration of KMEX, Channel 34, for giving us this wonderful opportunity to be leaders and to be a prototype for the rest of Spanish stations in all of the United States. As you know, we are the first local morning newscast in all of the United States. After us, New York started their newscast last year in October. This year, Miami started its own morning newscast, and it seems like yesterday that we started our one-hour newscast in the morning with Many Dreams, Challenges, and this year, it has gone so well, the response of our community has been so great, that we've had the opportunity to expand to two hours, to offer more local news, weather reports, all in our language. There's a great need in our community for specific information that they can only find at Channel 34 in the morning, and we are so grateful to be able to give this service to our community, because this is what we work for. We are immigrants, all of us here are immigrants. We come to this country looking for a better life, and we want to be part of this society, and we want to be part of the solution here, and we want to work together with the government, with community activists, everybody as a whole, work together for a better future in Los Angeles. This is a wonderful city, the numbers are changing. As we can see, more and more Latinos are here, and we, besides informing the people, we also want to create a front of power, political power, because as we can see, Latinos here are educating themselves now. We are trying to inform our people of all the opportunities out there for them, for the kids, because we want a more powerful community in the future. And as you can see back here, our team behind the camera and in front of the camera, we represent diversity, we represent this beautiful face of the future in Los Angeles. We are Mexican, we are Salvadorian, Guatemalan, we are Texans, we are African-American, we are Asian-American, we are Native Americans, we're Pochos, we're Puerto Rican, Argentinian, we are from everywhere in America, and we are all here together in Los Angeles, trying to make a better future for all of us, not only for the Latino community, because as we can see, English-speaking people are also watching our show, and we invite you to be part of this, and watch us every morning, you will find very useful information, and you will see why we are so different and why people are catching the fever. Everybody is, it's contagious, because we offer to our community what they didn't have before and in their own language. We tell them how to dress for the kind of weather that we're going to have, we tell them what their children are going to have for lunch, but we also do more than that. We try to empower our community, we try to let them know that becoming a citizen here in this country is extremely important, and we also try to let them know, for example, now with the census, that they don't have to be afraid, that we all count here in this country, and it's important to be counted, and we are behind many campaigns to empower the community, and for that, we have to thank the administration of Channel 34, starting with our general manager, Mr. Augie Martinez, who is very instrumental in this new movement of Spanish-speaking media. Also, our news director, Haydo Marin, who is here today, thank you so much for your support, our executive producer, Marilena Howoregui, and everybody that works so diligently at Channel 34, and it's an incredible effort for all of us, and we do it because we are part of this community, and we want to see a better future for all of our children, all of our children, and we all have the same chance here, and we want to be role models for our community and in Spanish. So muchas gracias, un placer, y con mucho orgullo les digo gracias y hacia el futuro, and please watch us every morning, we're here for you, thank you.
Madam President, again, thank you for the opportunity.
Hold on, before you leave, Mrs. Chick wants to say something.
Sí, es muy importante, porque estoy un ejemplo. Veo su canal y pienso que sus programas son muy interesantes y siempre muestran la realidad de nuestra ciudad y por eso, para eso, dijo gracias.
You don't know how important this is for us, to ver el compromiso de una mujer como usted hablando en español, y es un orgullo que nuestro canal sirva de instrumento para usted para que nos vea y aprenda más de nosotros, de nuestra cultura. Gracias.
Madam President, again, thank you for the time. I know this was not the California raisin, but I thought the message was important.
Yeah, this was actually a little more interesting than the California raisin.
The message was important, but also...
community, and we want to see a better future for all of our children, all of our children. And we all have the same chance here, and we want to be role models for our community and in Spanish. So muchas gracias, un placer, y con mucho orgullo, les digo gracias y hacia el futuro. And please watch us every morning. We're here for you. Thank you.
Madam President, again, thank you for the opportunity.
Hold on, before you leave, Mrs. Chick wants to say something.
Sí, es muy importante. Porque estoy un ejemplo. Veo su canal y pienso que sus programas son muy interesantes y siempre muestran la realidad de nuestra ciudad y por eso, para eso, dijo gracias.
You don't know how important this is for us, to see, ver el compromiso de una mujer como usted hablando en español. Y es un orgullo que nuestro canal sirva de instrumento para usted, para que nos vea y aprenda más de nosotros, de nuestra cultura. Gracias.
Madam President, again, thank you for the time. I know this was not the California raisin, but I thought the message was important.
Yeah, this was actually a little more interesting than the California raisin.
The message was important. But also, members of the council, today, I recognize that I have 498 days left in office. And one of the things that we talk about is how we become part of Los Angeles and real Los Angeles. And those of us who choose to communicate across barriers and represent our constituencies as a whole will continue to be public policymakers. And I just want you to know that, because not speaking Spanish is not a barrier when you have organizations like this who want to work with you. And they clearly want to work with us. Again, thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Hernandez, and all of you. The chair recognizes Mr. Holden for a presentation. While the podium's shifting hands here, let me just point out to the council members that we are, we have a short agenda once we get to it, but we also are a little tight on a quorum, so. Mr. Holden, are you ready? Mr. Holden, your public awaits. Maybe we'll just start the agenda.
Wait, wait, wait.
Wait, wait, yeah, well.
You took so much time, Madam President. You were down here forever with those dancing dolls and all.
Yeah, but I was at the podium.
I know, you stood to the side while they danced. But that's okay. I mean, we're going to move on. Yes, Mr. Thomas? Yeah, we got to wait some quiet, I have to say.
Yeah, wait for some quiet so Mrs. Galanta can tell you she heard it through the grapevine, Mr. Holden.
Thank you, Mr. Thomas. We have with us today, Madam President and others, a very distinct honor to accept the newly-elected president, to receive, that is, of the Korean-American Federation of Los Angeles to the City Council. This has been going on for 25 years. The 25th President, Dr. Ki Won Ha. Give him a big hand and welcome to the podium. Dr. Ha is really an activist for our community, and has been for a number of years. He's well-educated, well-trained. And that began in Korea, when he got his Bachelor of Science in Electrical Engineering from Seoul National University in Korea. He then proceeded to earn his Master's Degree in Electrical Engineering from the University of Wisconsin's. And they've been winning some Rose Bowl games. Did you like that?
Sure.
Okay, he does. He's dedicated to Wisconsin. And his PhD in Electrical Engineering from the University of California. And they've been losing. Which side of your arm, Doc? He's been very active, as I said. He's President of the Hancock Property Management Company, Inc., and co-owner of the Nandnam chain supermarket, and many other activities, Mr. President, which earned him an opportunity to run for and to be elected to the Korean Federation of Los Angeles. So I want to, first of all, before I present this certificate, congratulations to Dr. Ha. I think we should acknowledge all the board members. Would you just raise your hand here? These are the board members of the Federation?
Okay.
All right. So Dr. Ha, on the occasion of your being elected the 25th President of the Korean-American Federation of Los Angeles, behalf of my district, I join with the Los Angeles City Council in applauding your outstanding commitment to the community. Your exemplary efforts have been of real value to the city of Los Angeles and are worthy of high regards. Thank you for furthering the common goal of making our city a better place in which to live. This is a tough campaign. You think we have it tough running for City Council, but from Dr. Ha and all the other candidates, had it even tougher. They registered to vote Koreans from throughout the county of Los Angeles. And when the final vote was tallied, Dr. Ha had won the election as President, determined for two years. And I want to present this certificate of congratulations to you, Dr. Ha, and welcome once again you and the members of the Board of Directors. When I was first elected, over 12 years ago, one of the first assignments I had was given to me by Dr. Ha, and I went ahead and took care of it. Is that right, Doc? All right.
Hello, my name's Ki Won Ha. I heard enough Latino power today, this morning, but we have Asian power, especially Korean power. As you see, in LA County, we have 650,000 Korean-Americans live here. So my campaign involves all the LA County Korean-Americans. We have 38,000 registered votes for this campaign, that we have successfully won our presidency. This is the first time the President of the Korean Federation ever made a speech in front of all the councilmen. So it's appreciated, and I'm very thankful for giving me the opportunity. We have a lack of current capital, we have a need for Korean community. The Korean-American community wish this council to focus its attention on a much-needed facility in Koreatown, a senior citizen center. At present, we have obtained 4,000 signatures from Korean-American senior citizens requesting the city help to build a center for them. This center will support growing elderly population in Koreatown. It is our hope the city and the county will provide financial assistance, as they have in the past, for similar facility in other ethnic communities. A few weeks ago, our Councilman, Councilman Holden, sent a letter to the mayor's office requesting that $500,000 to be designated in the annual budget for the building of a senior citizen center in Koreatown. Most Korean-Americans own business in Los Angeles, thus contribute significant amount of money to the city in the form of tax, license, fees, and donation. We hope the council will keep this in mind when it reviews the budget in April. Korean-American communities ask that each of you approve Councilman Holden's proposal of $500,000 for the Koreatown Senior Citizen Center. Thank you again for giving me the opportunity to speak for all of you. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Ha. I will share these five signatures with my colleagues and with the mayor. I might add, however, that in every community that we know in the city, the senior citizens are provided for, and there's no reason why we cannot provide the same opportunities for senior citizens in Koreatown. I understand you asking the county and the state to support the community in that effort, and we will join them. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Holden, and thank you to all of you for being here. Next item, Mr. Clerk.
Item number four on the regular agenda, request that this matter be continued until February 25th.
Without objection, so ordered.
Item number 11, request that matter be continued till March 21st.
Without objection, also so ordered.
Item 21, request that matter be continued till February 22nd.
Without objection, we'll do that, too.
And item 22, request that matter be continued till Wednesday, February 23rd.
So ordered. Okay, so does that leave us anything?
It does. Items number 1 through 10 on the regular agenda, with the exception of number four, which has been acted on.
Okay, do we have, Ms. Akatsuki, you look like you want to say something.
On item eight, there's a technical amendment just to adjust the amounts of money and put them in the appropriate counts. I'd like to move that with the committee report as well.
All right, so item eight will be amended, and we have before us items 1 through 10. Does anybody have anything to say? Seeing none, open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
12 ayes.
Those are approved. Next item.
Items number 12 through 20 on the regular agenda are items which public carries have not been held.
We have no cards on any of those items. Is there anybody in the chamber wishing to speak on items?
Ms. Galanta, Madam President?
Yes.
With regard to item 20, I'd just like to amend it in a minor way to have the report come back from ITA rather than from a larger task force.
Okay. Anybody have any problem with that? Item number, say again?
20.
Item number 20.
I'd like to call 16 special.
All right, 16 is called special. Any other specials? Okay, open the roll on items.
Items number 12 through 20, with the exception of 16 and 20 as amended.
Well, 20's in, but as amended. Right, okay, open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
12 ayes.
Those are approved. Next item.
Item number 16, called special by Councilmember Chick.
There you go. Would you push the button, please?
Yes.
Go.
I certainly rise in support of this action today, and perhaps will even publicly ask for a mini-education on what's going on in building and safety, to also participate in the Code Watch program. But I mostly wanted to take the opportunity to tout the program and to spread the word to any listening public that Code Watch is a program that gives very brief, but thorough training to residents, to volunteers out in the city who care about their communities and their neighborhoods, who get frustrated seeing things like graffiti and cars parked on lawns and code violations that are visible by just walking or driving down the street. And the program has been very, very successful in both reducing blight and problem properties and things that pull our communities down. Has been successful in saving taxpayer dollars, because we're using volunteers instead of city staff in instances where volunteers can easily do this. And the best part of all is that we're getting a very, very high percentage rate of voluntary compliance, that when property owners get the letters from the city saying, you've got a problem, you're violating a city code, and this is how you need to correct it, that we're finding that most people want to be good neighbors and are quickly remedying the problem. So I want to tout the program, reach out into the public for more volunteers, and end by asking the Chair of Public Safety, just in transferring the money to the Volunteer Bureau, which I know is running the program, I think that will help them expand the outreach. But is Building and Safety Department and inspectors involved, still involved in the program in some way?
Yes, thank you. I had, I also pressed my button to speak and just explain that that is the case. Clearly, this is being coordinated by the Volunteer Bureau, and that's where the staff is, to do the training and do the outreach. But they don't do the training singularly. They do the training with inviting the Building and Safety inspectors in to help advise them, tell them what the codes are, and expand it as far as it can. And they are still working very, very actively, and in fact, even beyond Code Watch, where in a community that we both share, in Tarzana, there is now a significant sign enforcement part of this, it's going to be Code Watch, where working with the, not only the Code Watch volunteers, but the Chamber of Commerce, the Homeowners Association, and Building and Safety, they are going to go out and sweep the boulevard, first neighbor to neighbor, inviting people to comply and telling them about that and showing them how it's going to benefit the entire community. So that's just one aspect of what can be done, what is being done, and this is just a recognition that we need to keep that person in the Volunteer Bureau expanding and active and letting everyone, as you had indicated, who might be watching this, to say, call our offices and get involved in this, because it's something that can be done to improve your own neighborhood.
Mr. Pacheco.
I want to speak on another item, Si.
Oh, okay. Mr. Wax?
Yeah, I obviously support this, and I want to both echo what Ms. Chick said and congratulate her, because she's really the person that first initiated this as a pilot program. And it's a program that is working here, it's working in other cities, and it's one that I think could be vastly expanded. I think that as neighborhood councils eventually form, this will be a perfect vehicle through which we can expand this effort. And I think that in anticipating next year's budget and in anticipating the eventual implementation of a citywide network of neighborhood councils and how well that ties in with this program, we should already be seeking an expansion of this. This is a few dollars getting an enormous amount of service to the city, which would otherwise cost a far greater amount if it were only done by city employees. And beyond that, it has the immeasurable value of people in their own community, of people in the city doing something about their own problems, which is something we have to encourage more. So I just hope that we can proactively look towards a substantial expansion of this program in the relatively near future, and I think Ms. Chick should be very pleased with the way it's going so far.
Anybody else? In that case, the item is before us. Open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
12 ayes.
Unanimously approved. Now, Mr. Pacheco, I understand you wanted to reconsider item 17?
Yes, Madam President. I would want to reconsider item 17 solely for the purpose of introducing 17A, which was reviewed.
Okay, hold on a second. Let's officially, without objection, we're reconsidering item 17 now.
And I would just like to move 17A, which has been distributed to everyone. Simply, it's clarifying language that the City Attorney's Office suggested we include in the motion. So we just made some clarification.
So you're moving approval of the amended version?
Yes.
Or the substitute motion?
Thank you.
Do I hear any other? And I know you knew that, I didn't mean to. Any other comments? In that case, open the roll on the substitute motion in item 17, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
12 ayes.
Unanimous vote. Next item.
Now's the time for public comment on non-agenda items.
All right, we have Carmen Kirk and Richard Robinson. Is Ms. Kirk here? Carmen Kirk, are you here?
Yes.
Yes, I see you. Okay.
Thank you. Good morning, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Carmen Kirk. I have worked at the Window Hotel near the airport for five years. I am the only female cook in the hotel. I am a member of the hotel in Restaurant Junior Local 814. My coworkers and I are here because the hotel is now on sale. The higher corporation is buying it. We need our job working conditions protected like seniority and health insurance. On a personal note, right now, I am fighting, right now, I'm fighting a family member to strengthen, to give them strength to go through a rehab program. The last thing my family and I need right now is for me to lose my job. Like me, who depend on this job, I'm sorry, 250 people also do. You can help us. Councilmember Rue Galanta is helping us. She has a letter addressed to the higher corporation, asking them to do the right thing. Please sign the letter. Thank you, Councilmember Galanta, and all of you who already signed. Thank you very much.
Thank you, and thank you for coming. We have six who have signed so far, and I'm sure we're going to have more.
Seven.
Seven. Oh, okay, very good. We have seven so far, and I'm sure we're going to have more. We don't have everyone here today, unfortunately.
Madam Protem, President, pardon me, public speaking isn't my forte. Please bear with me while I attempt to get structure to a relatively disorganized mind. Honorable President, members, I support the Los Angeles Police Department. First, two decades ago, under Chief Gates, then William Williams, and now President, Police Chief Bernard Parks. Lose hype and spin would have you believe that Chief Parks is not doing his job. The process of running his department is in its beginning. The process of getting rid of the rotten apples who have destroyed the credibility of Chief Gates, Williams, and now Parks is just beginning. You do not clean up a department as large as Los Angeles Police Department overnight. The process is accomplished one day at a time. The full implementing of the Christopher Commission reforms is a process. La implementación completa de la Comisión de Cristopher Reformas es un proceso. Personalmente, he insistido en la necesidad de profesionalismo en el foro durante décadas. El mentalismo de los policias de cowboy de muchos de sus oficiales es el resultado de la falta de entrenamiento académico. Muchos retenientes reciben poco entrenamiento y demasiada autonomía, ni sirven ni protegen. Oficiales entrenados, reemplazando a los incompetentes a lo largo del tiempo, ayudarán a tu jefe a continuar con el departamento. No encarcelen al jefe de la policía. Gracias.
Gracias, señor Robinson. ¿Hay alguien más que quiera hacer un comentario? En ese caso, el periodo de comentario público está cerrado y vamos al siguiente item, señor jurado.
Motion para postulación y solicitud de refuerzo.
Unanámico voto.
Miembros del Consejo de la Ciudad que se deseen ser excusados de la atención del Consejo. El consejo membro Ridley Thomas se desee ser excusado el martes 22 de febrero para llegar a 11:00 AM por asuntos personales. ¿Esto cumple con la política?
Unanámico voto.
La mesa está limpia.
Señor Ferraro debe ser excusado el martes 22. ¿Es ese martes? Me he perdido.
Martes 22.
Bien, y el presidente del Consejo de la Ciudad Ferraro también debe ser excusado. Bien, ¿tenemos alguna motion adjunta? ¿Cualquier persona, por favor, levante la mano para adjuntas? Señora Chik.
Sí, muy sorry, colegas, de anunciar y de pedirnos que adjunemos en memoria de uno de nuestros propios oficiales policiales y de alguien con el que mi ex depuente Eric Rose estaba muy cerca en su trabajo como oficial reservado en West Valley. Sargento dos, conocido como Sonny Medina. Falleció a la edad de 39 en tomar su propia vida, lo cual es... La población policial es inordinariamente plagada por tal tragedia. Fue un remarkable, impecable y más honesto, down-to-earth tipo de tipo. Una persona muy generosa. Por ejemplo, cuando un hijo de un amigo se falleció, Sonny inmediatamente fue a su cuenta bancaria y sacó dinero que no tenía en exceso para darle a la familia. Pero fue un persona extremadamente carita y dura. Fue un buen maestro para jóvenes oficiales policiales como Eric y nutrió a ellos para convertirse en excelentes oficiales en el campo. Cuando estaba en cargo de vice, regularmente comunicaba a los oficiales de la Consecha servidos por West Valley para mantenerlos informados sobre actividades importantes en su comunidad. Durante sus 18 y medio años con la LAPD, Sonny recibió dos medallas policiales y el medalla del departamento de valor, que es el premio más alto para la valentía. Deja a su esposa Leslie y dos hijas, Rachel siete y Devin dos.
Todos los miembros. Señor Hernandez.
Madam Presidente, creo que el consejo membro Pacheco podría ayudarme en esto. Estuve sorprendido. Ayer fui a mi oficina y me dijo que Paul Christosimo había fallecido. Y Paul Christosimo fue un amigo mío, creo que hace unos 20 años. Y hicimos el JC juntos y estábamos involucrado con la mejora de la comunidad. Y era alguien que consideraba un amigo. Falleció debido a complicaciones de un accidente automovilístico. Aparentemente, fue golpeado por un conductor drunk. Y sobrevivió con su esposa Debbie, tres hijos, Barbara, Paula y Paul. También su madre Francis, cinco hermanos y dos hermanas. Solo quería compartir que mi última comunicación con Paul fue relacionada con algunos de los problemas en el Centro de Recreación de Highland Park porque estaba muy involucrado con el Little League allí. Y su hermana Paula Christosimo, creo que conocemos en cívico. Ella ha venido y hablado con nosotros. Y es conocida como activista en su comunidad. Paul entendió el sistema y quería cambiar el sistema, ir por el sistema. También fue un excelente orador. Y se preocupaba mucho por los niños en Highland Park. Y estará muy desaparecido por las personas con las que tocó así como por la comunidad en la que estaba parte.
Gracias. Señor Pacheco.
Yo iba a adjuntar en memoria de Paul. Y doy cuenta de muchas de las declaraciones y sentimientos que Mike transmitió. También estuve sorprendido de escuchar que había fallecido. Y fue el resultado de un conductor drunk, lo cual es obviamente muy trágico. Especialmente, habiendo tenido la experiencia de procesar conductores drunk, siempre es trágico cuando el comportamiento criminal toma otra vida. Es malo que estén allí, bebiendo y conduciendo. Pero Paul fue muy activo. La forma en que me conocí fue... Estaba en uno de esos foros de candidatos de 15 personas que teníamos en la calle. Y volví a la oficina de campaña y él se fue, me siguió del lugar y fue realmente inspirado por mi presentación y dijo "quiero ayudarte". Y no solo quería ayudar, sino que rápidamente sacó su cheque y dio una contribución en el lugar. Y su pasión era el deporte y el Little League. Y fue algo que el consejo de Hernandez y yo, y mi oficina y su oficina hemos estado trabajando con el Centro de Recreación de Highland Park. Así que realmente desaparece el hecho de que no vamos a tener a Paul con nosotros. Y sobrevivió con una gran familia. Y Deborah fue un voluntario muy completo y consciente en la campaña. Y es una fuerza en la comunidad en sí. Así que es muy trágico tenerlo fallecer. También quería adjuntar en memoria de otra tragedia y esto se está volviendo muy frecuente. Pero quiero... Me estoy molestando. Quiero adjuntar en memoria de Alexander Sana. Fue la víctima de un accidente de paseo en Eagle Rock este martes pasado, el 15 de febrero. Era un niño de siete años que estaba en camino... Era un primero en el Rockdale Elementary School. Juguó t-ball en el Centro de Recreación de Yosemite. Quería ser un bombero, probablemente como muchos niños pequeños. Y, de hecho, defendió y frecuentemente visitó a todos los bomberos en la estación 42. Amaba abrazar a la gente y ir a campar. Alex sobrevivió con sus padres, Mark y Juan de Sana, y su hermano Anthony, que consideró su mejor amigo. Lo trágico de todo esto fue que escuché a sus padres hablar de los niños y cómo eran muy orgullosos de hacerlo a través de la calle. Y supongo que esta vez no lo hizo. Pero solo quería adjuntar en memoria de Alex Sana.
¿Alguien más? Abre el rollo. El Consejo está adjunto. Probablemente valga la pena notar que la mayoría de las personas que conducen drunk realmente no quieren matar a nadie, pero lo hacen de todos modos.
Quiero hacer un anuncio, aunque lo atrapamos al conductor en el paseo.
Bueno, lo sé, pero no pronto.
No.
Bien, estamos adjuntos. Buena semana, todos, y cuidado con la moto.